I did, thank you, yeah. With my life. Oh, he'll be here at some point, but we just have to see when I work on it to figure it would be better.
Okay, we'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you and welcome to this special meeting tonight. We've got one speaker on non-agenda items, Jim Varnador. Is Jim here?
Getting so I think I live here, Mr. Jim. Jim Varnador, Post Office Box 5859, City Heights, California 92165. I note with considerable satisfaction that the district chose its superintendent using a modified version of the process Cynthia Conger and I began recommending years ago when the trustees brought Carl Cohn out of retirement. We continued to recommend an open and transparent selection system when shortly afterwards the trustees chose the chief administrative officer who was in violation of the federal law at the moment he was chosen. Later, and in vain, we urged the board to adopt an open and transparent search and selection system when it sought a superintendent to replace Cohn. Secret backroom dealing is the wrong procedure for choosing senior management at the district. Now we have confirmation that an open, transparent process is much more satisfactory and effective. I don't ask the board to, nor do I expect it to, offer Cynthia and me even a word of recognition for having correctly diagnosed what was wrong with the earlier selection processes, or for having suggested a correct formula for hiring senior management in the district. Virtue is its own reward, it needs nothing more. Cynthia and I will savor our contribution to the district. We are very pleased at how well it worked in the recent selection process. We hope you're pleased with that success too, and we'll use an open and transparent process that intimately involves citizens every time you set about filling senior management positions at the district headquarters. Thank you.
And before we get started, Superintendent Koba and I had a chance to be at the luncheon of the California Association of Bilingual Educators this afternoon, and Bill, did you want to talk about?
Yes, if I could. Thank you, President Barrera. It was a pleasure and an honor today to go to the CABA, its acronym, and to find both county superintendent Dr. Randy Ward recognized as an individual for contributions to other language, bilateral, multilanguage programs. There's a large, broad-based umbrella. And in addition to Dr. Ward being recognized as the individual for the year's contributions, San Diego Unified School District and the San Diego Unified Board of Education was also recognized for the organizational contribution. And I very quickly wanted to read this certificate and present it to each of the trustees, the Two Way CABA State Affiliate California Association of Bilingual Education 2010 Promoting Biliteracy Award, addressed to the San Diego Unified School District, school board members Richard Barrera, John DeBeck, John Lee Evans, Sheila Jackson, and Catherine Nakamura, for their vision in recognizing that multilingualism is an essential skill for all 21st century individuals living in a just, inclusive society, and for their leadership in establishing the language learning policy that embraces the rich cultural diversity of the San Diego community and promotes language learning opportunities for all students through a variety of K-12 educational experiences. Presented 18th Annual National Two Way Immersion Conference, July 6, 2010, San Diego, California, signed out by Marybel Lopez Tyus President, co-signed by Rosa G. Molina Executive Director. So this goes to each of you.
Thanks for that presentation, and I think this is really a recognition for the incredible work of our staff, especially in the Office of Language Acquisition, Mary Waldron and Terry Walters, and especially to the parents who've been such strong advocates for so many years for bilingual education. So let's move on in our agenda. Our first item that's, well, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, and our first item is actually item C3. This is the renewal of King Chavez Arts Academy Charter. C2, oh, voluntary, I'm sorry, yeah. Do we get a motion for the voluntary withdrawal?
Second.
Okay.
You know, I've been having a series of meetings up in Saro Mesa, and I think I've shared those, you know, at least with Mr. Koba, but I think, you know, those schools are really hungry to succeed, and they're ready. A lot of them have excellent test scores, but they do need help with marketing and with getting their good story out the door. And Taft is starting to grow and to evolve. I think with this having been stopped, you know, for whatever reason, it didn't really have anything to do with that particularly, but, you know, Taft Middle School really deserves some support, and there's clearly, I think, enough kids that, you know, that it can be grown if we nurture that school. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Great, thank you, Nakamura. Okay, so on to C3, the renewal of King Chavez Arts Academy Charter. Did we not vote? I am so glad myself.
This was on the Mission Valley.
This is our back. I thought we voted.
They must declare it.
Oh, yeah, okay. Okay, Superintendent Koba.
President Barrera, we have King Chavez Arts Academy renewal, and I have Dr. Tony Burks, and he is supported by Mr. Moises Aguirre.
Thank you, trustees and Superintendent Koba. Just before I begin, I should take just a moment to introduce Dr. Rupi Boyd. Dr. Boyd will continue the work in the Office of Charter Schools for our district. I also want to take just a moment to say thank you to our charter leader advisory group, the California Association, excuse me, California Charter Schools Association, and then, of course, Moises Aguirre. We've done some, I think, some tremendous work together. King Chavez Arts Academy. As you know, the board held a public hearing on March 16 in accordance with the California Education Code. The item returned for action on June 1. At that time, the board requested initial information related to findings for non-renewal. As a staff, we recommend that the Board of Education approve the King Chavez Arts Charter petition for five, for term beginning July 1 and ending on June 30, 2015. That includes the conditions that are included in the board report that you have for you and in the renewal MOU agreement. If the board makes a determination that it will not renew the charter petition, the board report also includes findings and supporting facts for non-renewal determination as well. I've got a larger list of things I could read, but I'm going to stop there and say that we do have members from the King Chavez Arts Charter School on hand if you need to hear additional information, and we also have our staff present.
Okay, great, and we've got several public speakers, so I'll call public speakers now. So let's start with Tim Wolf, Douglas Harrell, Adriana Diaz, Claudia Escobar, and Linda Pereira.
Good afternoon, Board. Superintendent Koba, congratulations on your being the finalist for the superintendency. Board President Barrera.
He's not the finalist, he is the superintendent.
Pardon?
He is the superintendent.
Final selection. Congratulations on being the superintendent. Thank you. Board members, staff, and also welcome to all the staff members that are here today from King Chavez, to the parents, the students, and friends of King Chavez. As a conversion charter is recognized by the district and is referenced in the district report, the King Chavez Arts Academy has made a 98-point gain in API scores over the last four years of testing, when referenced by the API of King Elementary in its final year of operation. The state did not take this gain into consideration when designating the school as persistently low-performing, as the API score only followed the King Chavez Primary Academy. The school has made API growth targets in two of the last three years. The school has received a three-year interim WASC, that's the Western Association of Schools and Colleges accreditation, in 2009, 2010. The school meets the renewal criteria detailed in San Diego Unified School District's Comprehensive Charter School Accountability System. The school meets the charter renewal criteria detailed in the California Education Code, number 47606. The San Diego Unified School District Charter Office has recommended the Arts Academy Charter petition be renewed. King Chavez Arts Academy is committed to provide an excellent education to children in Barrio Logan. Its newly reconstituted leadership, teaching, and support staff are committed to the King Chavez mission of excellence. We welcome the district as a partner in our open and transparent administration and welcome the district's oversight of our continuing reform efforts. Thank you. I'd like to now introduce Mr. Doug Harrell. He is our educational coordinator. Mr. Harrell started his career at San Diego Unified. He's since gone on to be an elementary principal, middle school principal, high school principal, and most recently Vice President of Edison Charter Schools in California. We're lucky to have him on our staff, Mr. Harrell.
Good afternoon, honorable board members and Superintendent Koba. As Dr. Wolf said, I have a long and extensive career in education. I actually started in 1971 as an aide, and in '78 I became a teacher. I taught with the district for 10 years. I moved into the Races and Human Relations Program from there with San Diego City Schools, as a magnet resource teacher at Choyas and a project resource teacher at ME, and then I got picked up as a K-8 principal in East Palo Alto. I came back down and was K-6 principal at Eastlake Elementary School. Then I was recruited to take on a high school as a principal. Then I moved over into Edison, turned middle school around, and they promoted me to be Vice President of Education Services, and I took over every Edison Charter School in the state of California. As you know, that was a hardship on the family, leaving on Monday, coming back on Friday. I was able to be picked up by King Chavez in that same kind of position. So now I'm the education director, and I'd like to say that from that position, I think I can provide the support and the guidance to help turn arts around and support all the other schools. I start off by having our schools address a simple question. How do you bring up student achievement? How do you bring up test scores? And then we go from that process to do a comprehensive needs assessment, and I do that in five different areas. First area is curriculum instruction, you know, talking about standards-based education and being data-driven, also using up-to-date curriculum. Second area would be teaching learning, that's pedagogy, classroom management, instruction, and structure. Third area is healthy school culture and climate. Fourth, demographic and cultural competencies. And the fifth area is test-taking skills. From that information, from a point of view of sheer decision-making, collaboration, and sheer leadership, I have every school develop a comprehensive site plan that has a mid-year and an end-of-the-year review. It encompasses school-wide and year-long PD plan, and I call it an Action Plan Master Calendar. I call it an Action Plan Master Calendar because it lays out the initiatives in the PDs from the point of view, who's responsible for it, when's it going to happen, what's the accountability piece, what resources that you need, and it's all laid out for the whole year on that calendar so we can move forward. Then we're introduced being school-wide, being school-wide data-driven, not just in terms of instruction, but on how well we run our school and manage our schools. But we do monthly benchmark assessment based on data director, weekly PLCs, which will produce monthly dashboard that we can look at that data that I'll be glad to share with everybody. Also, we're going to have an advanced and consistent mentoring program for all teachers, specifically new teachers and principals.
Can I wrap it up, Mr. Barrera?
Yeah, well, basically, this leads us into us having strong ties with the community. We've shown a 4.5% increase in language arts. Teachers have made and developed programs and have shown great progress in ELD. And again, the school is located within, between two exemplary programs that they can lend on for support.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Barrera.
So I'd just like to bring up Mrs. Adriana Diaz. She is a community member, teacher, and the principal of KC Excellence, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, President Barrera, board members, and Superintendent Koba. My name is Adriana Diaz, and I live in the community of Logan Heights. As a lifelong resident of the community, I have been with King Chavez since its inception as a teacher, parent, and now principal. First and foremost, I would like to thank you for all of the support San Diego Unified has given us over the years. In the last 10 years, with King Chavez in existence, I have seen an incredible difference in our children, our parents, and our community as a whole. Throughout the years, I have seen our organization have both successes and challenges. King Chavez is an organization that takes pride in our successes, and at the same time, we are self-reflective and possess the resilience to accept challenges as an opportunity for growth. Furthermore, King Chavez is an established body where parents and students are interwoven among all of our academies. To not renew the Arts Academy would be short-sighted. We are all in this together, and what affects one academy affects us all. I believe that the Arts Academy has the motivation, support, and drive to move beyond this. The King Chavez organization will continue to hold our seven academies accountable to the main principle of our mission statement, and that is to seek excellence. I would like to encourage you to renew the Arts Academy Charter and keep this dream alive. Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Claudia Escobar, and I am here to support King Chavez Art Academy. I moved to San Diego in January of 2009. I registered my kids in King Chavez because it was the closest school to my house, but I don't regret that my kids are attending King Chavez. It's the best school my kids have attended because the staff cares for needs, they treat students with respect and show them how to respect themselves and others. One of the differences between this school and the other schools is that my parents have a voice. I am the PTO president, and I have a voice in what happens in my kids' school. I feel empowered by the staff at King Chavez. This is a school that it's truly about the community. Other schools my kids attend never care about what my parents had to say, and now I am an important part of the organization. My daughter really needed academic help, and she got a lot of special support this year. I have been, I have seen her learn a lot and become better student. I want my younger kids to have the same experience and support that my older kids receive. Please renew the Art Academy for my kids, for the community.
Linda Pereira, followed by Alicia Aguilar and Anthony Hernandez.
Hello, board members and Superintendent Koba. My name is Linda Pereira. I live at 3055 Franklin Avenue. I currently have two sons that attend King Chavez Academy. I am very happy with the support and help that the teachers and staff have provided for my sons over the past years. The arts teachers, including Mrs. Woodhead, Mr. Hobson, Mr. Worthing, Mr. French, Ms. Garcia, Mrs. Bernard, Bernard, excuse me, and Ms. Clark, are very competent and always include me and keep me informed about what's going on with the school and my children. My oldest son went to private school, and I was never able to voice my opinion or concerns. At King Chavez, the staff always hears me and respects my opinion. I feel that that's important for our children to academically succeed. I'm asking you, as a concerned parent, to please renew the Arts Charter. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alicia Aguilar, and I live at 3042 J Street. I am one of the mothers who has a child attending King Chavez, excuse me. I am here today to show my support and share my beliefs that King Chavez is an important asset to our community. When I was a child, I attended King Chavez, and my oldest daughter, Giselle Lopez, started in front of school there. Now my daughter Jasmine Powell is a current student at this school. So as you can see, the school has played an important role, excuse me, educational role in my family, and if you can, excuse me, if you can take that, if you take that away, you'll be depriving, excuse me, depriving my daughter and the rest of the children from their education. Please don't take that away, what we need most. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Hernandez, and I am a fifth grader living in King Chavez Arts Academy. My address is 501 Morrison Street. I think we should keep this Arts Academy open because we have great teachers. All of the teachers from the arts have taught me a lot. I've been at the Arts Academy since third grade, and I have lots of fun coming to school. We have plays, arts, computers, and community garden that we can put part of. The teachers here treat me with respect. I know that they want me to be successful. I know that they believe in me. My fifth grade teacher, Ms. Garcia, has taught me a lot. She has spent her mornings and Saturdays working with our classmates and me to be better in math and language arts. It will be a very dedicated teacher, and it will be very sad to lose her or any of the other teachers that give so much to us. We have dance teachers who spend time teaching us dancing, something that not every school has. Our school has guided reading teachers who try to make us better readers. We have programs that take us to YMCA. We learn to swim. This is a great experience for all of us. In the time that I have been here, I was part of the after-school clubs. There were theater clubs, math clubs, language arts clubs, and world culture clubs. We have programs for summer school. One of them is the Charger Camp, which taught us how to throw footballs and be good sports. I learned yoga with my counselor. I learned how to breathe and to be peaceful. All of the programs are possible because of our school and teachers who care about us and have experienced something different. Please keep the Arts Academy open for our brothers and sisters can have the same opportunity and experience that I had.
That's job.
Hi, my name is Adrian Ramirez, and I live at 3021 Marcus Street. I just finished third grade at King Chavez Arts Academy. My sister is in the King Chavez preschool, and my brother just graduated from fifth grade. My mom has seen the changes because when we first came to this community, this was King Elementary. My brother has received a lot of support from his lesser teachers. When I went into kindergarten, our school was already King Chavez. I started off as a high student and have been able to keep learning, and I am very proud of being a good student. The teachers that I had made me keep on getting smarter. This school should stay open because their activities are fun and educational. I really want the Arts Academy to stay open because I don't want, I don't want my mom to worry about where she going to send me a bit closest. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Usman Malik.
Hello, my name is Usman Malik, and I live at 3080 J Street. I came to this country two years and six months ago. My mom chose King Chavez because it is close to our home. I started off in first grade and really enjoyed all of the fun things we did. I liked my teacher in first grade because she was really nice. Then I moved on to second grade and have learned how to do math and language arts with my friends. It was really fun being in second grade because we got to do a lot of fun things and learn so much. I passed second grade because I was smart enough to go to third, so I started practicing how to be smarter. My third grade teacher was also nice because she taught me a lot of things and was funny all the time. I think King Chavez is a marvelous school because it has entertainment and learning skills for all students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Greg Moser, followed by Chunky Sanchez.
Those guys are a hard act to follow.
I'm Greg Moser. I'm legal counsel for the school at the firm of Procopio. I represent lots of charter schools up and down the state, been before you a number of other times. This is exactly the sort of charter school that should not be approved, but approved without conditions. This is operated by King Chavez Academy of Excellence, a corporation that has been given a $500,000 dissemination grant to teach other schools their best practices. So this is not a weak charter operator. This is a school that has been making the kind of progress that the state requires. It more than meets the AB 1137 standards, as has been described before. So the conditions that relate to accountability, I think, are unnecessary and are over and above what's legally required. They're not really required by your policy, and they're certainly not required by state law. It's not consistent with what you're doing with your own schools, such as Burbank. So this is a school, this is a school operator that has already taken the hard steps of reconstitution to try to improve even further. There shouldn't be any, there are a number of conditions that relate to oversight. You can deal with those conditions through your normal oversight process. There are conditions that relate to the corporate structure, which if someone read the petition carefully, you would see that you don't need those conditions, that, you know, you talk about this is King Chavez Public Schools. Well, that's a defined term in the petition that actually refers to the corporation. So you, you know, the articles and bylaws are something that should be readily available. So again, this is a charter school and a charter school operator where you can have a lot of confidence they're going to do the right things, and you should be able to approve this charter for renewal without conditions. Thank you.
I made it, I got three minutes, and I took one to get down, so.
We'll start the clock now. We'll start the clock now.
Ramon Chunky Sanchez, 6367 Radio Drive, San Diego, 92114. My pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I've been here before the board. It was a whole different board many years ago. And members of the San Diego Unified School Board, first of all, all my respects. I know that each and every one of you are dedicated to the bettering of the educational endeavors of the children of the district. Otherwise, you wouldn't be on the board, right? And I respect you for that. I'm at King Chavez one day a week. I teach music. I'm a singing instructor with the kids there. And we're into a lot of songs that relate to the name of the school, King Chavez. Songs about Cesar Chavez, Dr. Martin Luther King, the civil rights movement, things that are also teaching these young children to be able to stand up and understand what they're really facing in, in this society, the many battles they have in front of them, like getting up to school on time, doing their homework, turning their homework in, staying off of drugs, staying out of gangs. It's not an easy neighborhood. And I was asked to write a little speech, but that's as far as I got, so everything else is coming from the heart. A good friend of mine once said, "There could be no change in society without poets." And poets referring to poets, musicians, dancers, artists, the arts. It brings something out of these kids and I see it every day. I see it the one day I come there, a week, and that's all I need to be there. The love that they show me, the love that they show their teachers, the love they show their administrators, the respect that they show them. And I know the school has struggled in many ways and there's a lot of things involved in that and we're not here to talk about that or make excuses. But all we're asking for is a chance to keep the door open for these children to come and give us another day to work with them. That one other day may make a big difference. Help us send them to Penn State and not the state Penn. Because in our neighborhoods, a lot of our young, we lose a lot of kids in many ways. And I've worked that community for 40 years. I've seen them come and go and I've seen them go, starting from this age right here. And I got the yellow light now. I got cued on that. I'm just here coming to you from the heart. Muchas gracias. Thank you for your attention. I'm hoping you give us the best. Give us a chance. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a staff recommendation to renew with conditions. Can we get our motion in a second?
I move to approve with conditions.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or comments, board members?
I just.
Doctor Evans.
I just want to say, I want to thank the staff for going over all of the information that we requested and looking at this very carefully and, and all of the options from renewal to renewal with conditions to non-renewal. And I think one of the things that we're seeing here today is some of the limitations of test scores and state reporting and so forth. There are a lot of things that are happening at this school that are not necessarily measured on all of these tests that are really, really important for the development of our future citizens. And I think we really need to pay a lot of attention to that and really need to pay attention to how we really evaluate schools. And as the last speaker said, in terms of giving the school another chance, I think that renewing with these conditions will allow the school to look at its strengths, look at its weaknesses, and to continue to move forward to provide really good education for the kids in our community.
Sir Dubeck.
Yeah. Well, I'm not against the renewal, but I think if you look at the conditions, they're probably more than we're asking others to do. And, you know, I'm sure that in the eagerness to grant, to charter, we may be missing the fact that it's hesitant, a kind of a trap. And so, I'm trying to roll through it to find where all these conditions are to get to the point, but where it is that I flagged, or at least I flagged mentally. It has to do with the condition on getting out of, within three years.
It's number two at the top of the, the top of the third page there.
All right. Well, I may have missed it or I'm looking at the wrong thing. I'd rather have that coincide with the renewal of their charter at the five years. In other words, if these conditions could be modified in a way that the charter doesn't have to be canceled at the end of three years, but has a same window of opportunity to raise their scores in five years, I think that's appropriate. That's my view. And because this condition is not exactly the same as we're asking, I think, of our own people. That's my own view. So, if, you know, I'll support the renewal as it's stated now, but I, I think I'd make a motion that we, we hold them to the same standard, but at the time of renewal of their charter.
So, are you amending the?
Well, it's a, it's a amended motion, yes, to approve the charter with the conditions that they reached their target that we set in here as one of the conditions at the end of the five-year charter period.
Is there a second for Mr. Dubeck's amendment?
Okay. Can I second it?
Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any comments on Mr. Dubeck's amendment? Okay, well, please, let's first vote on the amended motion, which is to renew with conditions, but to allow the entire five-year period. Please vote. Okay, so that motion passes, so I believe that they.
That's the end of it.
That's the end of it. That's right. So, the charter's renewed.
Yes, I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to thank King Chavez and the community, all of you. You know, of course, I do have to say that you had me before, but that line about there can be no change in society without poets, I'm sorry, you, that was, you know, way over the top. That was really good. But I'd like to thank the community and, you know, the leadership and the administration for working with the district and coming up with a list of, you know, conditions. And we do expect them to be followed, but it's the label of, you know, persistently failing school that as fair as unfair as it may be or may not be, and I think it is unfair in this instance, we still need to take steps to make sure that that is eliminated completely. And if, you know, hopefully, these will, you know, the conditions that we've placed on this, you know, will, will go a long way towards helping with that, you know, with that goal. But I'd like to thank staff for, for coming up with the list and for the discussion and for working with the school in, in coming to this solution, so, okay.
Well, thank you. I want to call attention to that, what I call the onerous part that was there, was that if they didn't meet their, their goal, that they would voluntarily surrender their charter. Now, what we've done is we've said the same thing, but we've gone out to the fifth year. That was my intent, okay? And so, the, you know, you still have things to do, but you have more time to do it.
It's going to take a long time to clear the room. You want to?
Well, no, we'll move on. We'll move on to item C4. This is the renewal for Magnolia Science Academy. And we've got one speaker on this, Lisa Berlanga.
Good afternoon, or evening, almost. Lisa Berlanga, California Charter Schools Association. First, I want to say congratulations to Superintendent Koba. Glad to see the interim removed. Great that you're staying. I'm here to speak on behalf of the renewal of Magnolia. Being a parent in the Del Cerro, San Carlos area, Magnolia's been a really good option for a lot of folks there. The district system works in a specific way. You have very small elementary schools and then larger middle schools and really large high schools. And for some kids, that's fabulous. And for others, they get lost in the shuffle. And I know many parents, once their child got to middle school, needed another option and Magnolia has provided that for many of our members. It's something that looks significantly different from a district middle school. It's significantly smaller, has the focus on science and technology, and really serves our community well. It's not perfect. No school is perfect. There's always room for improvement. I believe Magnolia's worked with district staff to come up with some solutions to some of the problems that were pointed out at the public hearing and they're more than willing to do that. So, I hope that they're renewed so that we can continue to have that option in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
Move approval with conditions.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion in a second. Any comment? If not, please vote. Okay, great. Passes four to one. The renewal for Magnolia Science Academy with conditions recommended by staff. Okay, we'll move on to item D1. This is the Prop S quarterly update.
Just go.
I mean, this is a quarterly update. He needs to start from wherever he can.
Someone's going to have to untangle these wires here.
Oh, I love those. You ever walk in and seen that? You know, yeah. But those were there.
Which one goes where?
Those were there before Prop S.
Well, by the time they got through, by the time they gave through with the work, the help from private school, they're going to be all right. He's got his vested interest to go buy some stuff from them and.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we get started? Go ahead, Mr. Markey.
Good evening. This is a continuing process and I guess this is the sixth time I've come before the Board of Education with a short update on the progress of Proposition S. And today is, will probably be the most brief that we've had thus far. We don't have a tremendous amount of information to pass, other than where we are with the program and so forth. I invite your attention to the agenda. I won't read it to you. It's just pretty straightforward. Our financial snapshot, as, as everybody recollects, we were approved in November 2008 for a $2.1 billion bond issuance. Thus far, we've encumbered $160 million. That's obligations and contracts, IDIQ contracts, and a variety of other methods to tie up that money. We've put $99.2 million of Prop S money into the economy since the inception, so this is a pretty darn good record. In 2010, the year that we're just closing, we've awarded $80 million in contract at the end of fiscal year, FY 2010. And by the end of 2010, we will have actually expended $82 million. So, we've been very busy this year getting our construction underway and carrying on with our building. In 2011, we project to award another $80 million and will spend 118. And that's because the contracts are moving along through the process, constructions get underway, and we'll be accelerating, getting that money out into the economy in these difficult Most significantly, I'd like to call attention to our, our originally planned 10-year schedule. The bond was set up to spend about, to get about $200 million a year in revenues over about a 10-year period. Of course, we pushed that to the right because of decreasing net asset values. It looks like with different financing tools, we can bring that schedule to the left a little bit and get down between 11 and a half years, 12 years, is what our initial guess is, which is excellent. And that's entirely because of the option to go through a 40-year bond period. I'd like to delay or hold that discussion to the 13th, when our bond advisor will come in and talk about specifics of that. And he's scheduled to come down then. Slide four. I'm very proud to say that we've pushed the I-21 program out to virtually every single school in the district and we've touched 36,700 students. This is a huge, huge impact, I think, on our, the way that we're delivering education. You know, there's people that are very pleased with the I-21 program and people that aren't. But the feedback that my staff and the IT department has is it's generally been widely recognized as a tremendous shot in the arm to our educational process and we're very pleased to be part of that. Right now, we have 890 fully equipped and operational classrooms in the district. That means that every piece of the equipment's installed and that we've got teachers that are trained in using it on a daily basis. So, that's a pretty good achievement for us. We've got 1,152, actually, it's a little bit higher than that, fully functional classrooms. That means that the teacher has been trained, the netbooks have been issued, and the screen is up and operating. And, and the ones that are not fully equipped are required, need a DVD player in Region One, and that got tied up in a contract perturbation, but we're going to get those out very quickly. So, we'll have all of our year-one systems in place, certainly by the start of school next, next fall. In the second year, we're looking at another, about another 1,200 systems.
We did math last year in the high schools and so it's going to be, it's going to be fourth grade, seventh grade, and then what are we doing in the high schools next?
I believe it's math and, correction, I believe it's English language, but I have to check what they're all. I believe it's English language is the next one. And please say that we're, we're putting the systems in our Title I schools first. And these are the ones that Ms. Jackson has reminded me have our greatest needs and that we're certainly doing that. And we're actually starting this week with your two installations. Slide five. Our E-Rate program is a, is a grant, basically, where we're putting in infrastructure systems at 76 sites throughout the district, better bandwidth, better switches, better networking equipment. Basically, it's a coupon. We organize the work and get it done and the federal government pays it directly, so that's something that we appreciate. It comes with a lot of strings and a lot of attention to detail and a tremendous amount of auditing. And even the most minor change in equipment has to go through the Department of General Services up in Sacramento, as well as approval by the federal government. We've got 23 notices, we've issued 23 notices to proceed at various sites throughout the district. We're a little bit behind schedule in this, largely due to problems with switching out equipment and making sure that we're inconsistent with the contract, but we hope to catch up and we'll do so very quickly. The data center, the Board of Education's asked me to come back and, to you, and report that we've been able to value engineer some things out of that program. The building itself is about eight and a half million dollar structure. We found $1.2 million in savings. We've got a report that's finished. It's going to go to the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee this month for their review and we'll come back to you for approval on that. It's a very in-depth study and we hope that it meets your expectations. Right now, we've got 50% construction documents fixed, finished. Completed projects. Although it was a small, a small project, our first project in Mission Bay High School was completely finished and approved and completed by the Division of State Architects. This is a fairly laborious process where they go through and check all the requirements of the project. We've paid everybody and they can take it off their records. Not, not a small achievement, is that we did it very quickly. So, the, the whole bond program got launched in January 2009 and we're actually finishing up some projects right now. The Garfield Culinary Arts site is finished and ready to start operating in the fall, so if you have inclination or you're in the neighborhood, you might want to take, take a walk by. I think the board president's been out there to take a look at that. It's a beautiful site and we're very excited about that. The track and field projects at Morris High School, Mira Mason, San Diego High School are finished. We finished a project, Maryland's Middle School, an ADA ramp, as well as athletic field, and we got our. we got our food carts all installed, which has made a big difference on campus, and we're very happy about that. This fall, we'll be finishing up some other projects, most notably the large classroom, 22 classroom, correction, 20 classroom building at Hoover High School. That's 94% completed. We're finishing up the flatwork outside and the entranceway. It's all been painted, it's structured. We're getting organized to get the furniture in there, and we have an opening planned for school in the fall. So we're looking forward to that. The Point Loma High School 8-classroom building, the site preparation work has been finished, and we're gonna start work on that. We had to do a bus turnaround area over there. There's a lot of work that's going on at, correction, at, I've got my projects mixed up. Point Loma High School is an 8-classroom building up on the hill, and that's moving along with no problems. We're gonna have an access ramp that goes from the athletic field over to the site. It's an interesting engineering problem where it is, but it's coming along quite well. The 16-classroom building at San Diego High School, as I mentioned earlier, we had to do quite a bit of site preparation work for that and to include a bus turnaround. And that's moving along okay. And we're gonna start breaking ground for that this summer, and that'll finish next year. The following career tech ed sites are underway. Madison High School Automotive Repair, that's about 65% complete. San Diego High Multimedia Project, which is very difficult technically. It's a great project. I'd love to take anybody over there that wants to take a look at that. That'll rival any production studio in the city of San Diego. It's absolutely fantastic. It was a difficult build. We had a lot of technical challenges on where it's located, power, and so forth and so on, but it's coming together. Morris High School Autobody is underway. We've got foundation work up there. The San Diego High School Culinary Arts Center is just about finished at 80%. Moving back to some more career tech education projects at Morris High School, that's 35% complete. San Diego High School School of Business Management is 86% complete, and Claremont Automotive and Madison High School just kicking off now. Our business outreach program, this, this data reflects a 47% EBE participation rate in construction contracts. That's a great number. It changes every month, and really, after the last set of awards, we're down about 37%. So it's, it changes as the contracts go out. I'm not happy and I'm not pleased with the progress we've made in traditionally underutilized business enterprises. And I'm gonna come to the board, I think, within another month or two, with some proposals on how we might better approach our contracting processes. Right now, we're in absolutely hard bid environment. When I look at something a little different for us at the district technically, lease, leaseback, maybe some CM multi-prime contracts and so forth, it'll give us an opportunity to hire people other than just on lowest cost. It's a very common tool in California, up and down the state. The district has not used that method over the years, but we wanna give it a shot and see, see how we can do. I think we can get great value for the district in terms of price, cost, and quality, as well as give those folks that want another shot at working at our district a better opportunity. We've done well with women-owned businesses and our disabled veterans program. One thing we have done is also looked at who's in the pool of professional services contractors. These are architects, engineers, people that do soil studies and so forth, and we're tracking those numbers. I'm happy to report that, I don't have the statistics with me here, but our first look at our partnership with the Labor Council and folks working with, on the project stabilization agreement is very positive. And they're holding up their end of the deal on the first, first blush. I don't have those, that data with me. I need to review it and come back, but I'll send you that at a later date. Our general contractor bid trends, I mean, this, this slide drew a great deal of scrutiny during our meeting we had with the Citizens Oversight Committee, and I cleaned it up quite a bit. And really, what we're looking at is the black line. That is the line that shows me that my, my construction bids are increasingly coming closer to our budget. And that's just a trend line. And the bottom line says the numbers of bidders that have bid on contracts. There is some correlation to when the project stabilization agreement came into play. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say there's a direct correlation. There is some correlation. We're gonna have to look at that more carefully, but the trends have been going up. They've also been going up at the county and other places due to construction costs. So there's gonna be a general escalation, and it's very difficult to isolate it for anything. But I would be remiss not to say that. There looks like there's some, some loose correlation, at least with the PSA.
Thank you.
And the numbers of bidders.
Thank you for the numbers.
Yes, ma'am. The bid results for 2009 are listed in charts 11 and 12, and you can look at those. And this is actually a lot of data, and the, and the blocks at the bottom, bottom is the takeaway. We've had a very, very favorable bid environment. And, you know, that's common knowledge, and, and it's a good news story for us and a bad news story for the industry. You know, folks are out of work. So we're benefiting from that right now. But the next slide, if we pour through this data, will show you that costs are escalating. So this isn't gonna go on forever. And the impact of that is I'm gonna have to really be paying way more attention to my value engineering, to my, the quality of my drawings, the oversight on the job, to be sure that we don't incur costs that we shouldn't incur. Right now, my change order rates are very, very good, which means to me that we're doing some things to control those costs. This, this slide here, it's, again, it's a trend slide. This is gonna change. If, if I can, if I can persist in getting up to $200 million a year in borrowing, then all these blocks go down, which is good. The blue block is the best case, I think, in the best case world, if I can borrow more money and it's over a 12-year period, that'll be coming underneath my all-funds line. And they'll all, they'll all drop. And that's the trend that we wanna look at over time. We have to pay attention to this. My overhead rates is, is a big part of it. Right now, it's a little higher than I'd like. We're about 11%. 9 to about 12 is where we should be. I'm gonna move that to the left. We have a board-approved plan to do so, and we're gonna execute that. That'll change a little bit if I have more money to spend. Right now, I'm still planning on the original budget or revenue projections that we got from our, our bond advisor last year, which was about an $85 to $100 million issuance next year. I'll know on, in mid-August, what my revenues will be. Financial status. We borrowed $170 million last year. In the second bond sale, our gardener underwood and bacon, our, our bond advisor guarantees $100 million. We're gonna put the documents in for $200 million. So we'll cross our fingers and, and hope for the best. And if we can find great buyers, we've got a good, we've got a good rating. The city of San Diego's tax base will support it. Then underwriters will feel positive, and we'll go to the market, and we'll borrow $200 million. That's a good news story. We should all have that kind of problem.
Stuart, is that, is that going to the market for $200 million, does that include the shift to 40-year?
Yeah. That's why.
That's why.
That's why we can get $200 million. Now, there's some impact, obviously, to taxpayer. You pay for it over a longer period of time.
Well, that's what I asked for, was the amortization. What's it gonna cost us to go do the 40 years over the 20 years? And I, you know, I do understand construction costs and taking advantage of the market. You know, I don't mean to be penny wise and pound foolish, but it'd be nice to know. I mean, I do that when I refinance.
Yes, ma'am.
I find out, you know, how much more is this loan costing me?
It's a, it's a, it's a high-interest item with us. Again, I'm gonna defer that answer to our bond advisor on the 13th, and he'll be here with a great deal of detail. I send him a list of frequently asked questions, and that was right at the top of the list. What's this tax, pay for the taxpayer? The other question is, why should we do it? Real simple math, mathematic answers to this. You know, one of the things we always have to come back to is what's best for the children. You know, what's, what's also best for their parents? And we've got, we've got this mix here. So we have to be careful with that. From a building perspective, I love $200 million.
Well, yeah.
You know, and I'd like to get that work done in the district as soon as possible. You know, that's not the only factor. Our current financial position is right here. Revenue's to date $182 million. Expenditures are 99. We're gonna spend another $10 million, and hopefully, I'll get that back by the end of the fiscal year, which is over. And our projected fund balance will be between $85 and $90 million. This interesting slide, this tells you where I am with my overhead. In 2009, I budgeted, the total budget was $19 million. I'm budgeting for 2010 $15.1, and I'll have a reduction in, in my own budget of about $4 million. So I've taken 33 or 40, 33% out of my operating budget. And this was entirely to follow what I projected to be the decrease in my revenues. And we've already started to do that. I intend to stay on this glide slope for as long as I can bear it. And we get to that point where I've got projects that aren't getting done, or we've lost some oversight, or I feel that I'm not doing as much work as I possibly can with the staff that I have, then I'll increase that a little bit. But my, my intention is to persist with this glide slope. I will have to come to the Board of Education for permission to bring in more architects and some other, other, those type of consultants in the next quarter, based on what our revenue projections are. Because those are the folks at the early part of the process I need to bring on to do the work. My performance metrics. The Division of the State Architect has suffered from the same labor pain that everybody else is in the state. In 2009, I had 193 days in plan, check, and review at the DSA, and now we're up to 220. They've, they've kinda shifted the deck chairs up in, up in Sacramento in this office and changed their leadership, and they've looked at different ways they can get things through the system faster. But it really hasn't made much difference, as far as we can tell. We watched that pretty carefully. Request for information, these are things that are in the technical end of my business, RFIs, and this is from builders or architects that ask the district what we wanna do with something. My average turnaround time is seven days for those. Change order rate is 1.6% right this minute. However, that will increase as some of these projects finish, and our builders come in and they issue their change orders towards the end of the project. And we've got a couple that are gonna bump up against the 10% or a little bit over. The Mission, the correction, the San Diego High School Multimedia, that'll probably get in about 16% through the, because of the degree of difficulty. I don't know what that is.
It's a mouse or something in here. Change order.
Um, change order.
Yes, yes.
Okay, probably, the submittal time, these are things that are, architects and builders have to give us and when they tell us specifically how they're gonna do something, cabinet work, for example, those are 42 days. And our average payment processing time is 11 days. The, the Prompt Payment Act calls for 30-day turnaround. In 2010, 2011, again, $80 million in project, 28 construction projects, 1,200 classroom suites or so with I-21, and that changes a little bit as we work with the school sites. And the next series of slides, we're gonna talk about the last couple of bullets on the 2010, 2011. The Independent Citizens Oversight Committee is quite concerned that I bring to you the execution list for a vote, and I intend to do that in September. And I've offered this list to you as a, as a proposal on what we're gonna do and when we're gonna do it over the next few years. The items in blue are things that we're actually intending to move ahead. They weren't further, that much further down the program, but because we've got some savings and because we have an increase in revenues, the potential is that I can move these things up. In the case of the Morris High School Child Development Center and Scripps Ranch Power and Energy Program Building, both ambitious projects, they're out of DSA. I've got a full set of drawings. I could go to contract immediately with that and get these projects started right away. The Hoover Sports Field upgrade, we're working through some of the environmental issues, but we should be able to start that, for example. On slide 21, we're looking at the Alba North Park Phase 3. This is a fairly good-sized project. That's been a great community partner for us. We've asked them to do a lot of things, and they've really chipped in, and, and we intend to move that ahead with your permission. Line number 33, the San Diego High School Site Modernization, which will also include field work. And line item 35, our football stadium projects at six sites. This would be Kearney, Crawford, UC High School, Henry, Mission Bay, and Mira Mesa. There's been a tremendous amount of community interest in getting the football fields taken care of. We've got 88 problems out there. In some cases, you know, the fields are not as flat and as secure as they could be. So we think that that's a wise decision for us. My proudest and most ambitious project, however, is number 36, the Mann Reconstruction Project. Should we get some money, a little bit more than we planned, and there's space, I think it's very important for us to do something significant out at Mann Middle School. I think it's the site that needs the most attention, in my mind, my professional judgment, and I'll come to the board with some details. With your permission, I'd like to come around and spend some time one-on-one with each of the board members, so you can ask questions like we did last time, back in July, January 2009, prior to the vote that you have and that we'll have in September. The Citizens Oversight Committee will have a chance to vet this list. We're gonna send it to them via letter, and they can ask any questions and so forth and so on. But it's my goal to get around and see everybody with the list, and you can ask a lot of detailed questions. There's just too much data right here, I think, now to make a meaningful call on that. But we'll get about six to eight weeks to take a look at it. Again, it's all dependent on what we can get from the bond folks. It's a continued list out through 2015. Some things that I'll be bringing forward to you for consideration and guidance are the policy on donated cash materials and services for capital projects. I've sent that to the I-C-O-C for their, for their comment, and I've not heard back yet, but we intend to talk about it this month. Round three of the Career Tech Education Grant Management Fund programs. We have a special meeting set up next Tuesday with the CTE folks. We're adjunct to that. We, superintendent has given us very clear guidance that anything that we do with CTE has to be part of a larger academic initiative and consistent with those policies. I will say about half the projects are renovations on existing sites that we'd have to do anyways. And we can get into the details on that. These are screen printing shops without, you know, adequate ventilation and so forth. So actually, they cross the line with safety. We're gonna have to do them anyways. And then there's other projects that are new initiatives. University City Stadium Lighting, that's at the, we're gonna be discussing that some more with, at the Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. I'm gonna come forward for approvals for Quality Act, SEQA certifications at Claremont Hoover and University City High School for a variety of things. And, and overall program acceleration for the bond. Now, I think that it would be wise for me to say that I'm always looking at the last project. And we gotta get to the last one. This is crown point. This is the last project in the bond, wherever that may be, 13 or 14 years out. We also have to remember there's a number last. So I've gotta husband my funds, gotta have a good program in place. Can't get, again, get ahead of myself financially, and we've gotta make sure that we get there. Now, before we get into some questions and answers, I'd like to show you our new portal that we have, and Lee's gonna drive for me here. And the Prop S website on the lower This is a, this is a, this is an active online database. It comes right out of our, our online expedition software system. And when you open it up, you see a map of the district. Lee, could you scroll up a little bit, please? At the very top, you see the letters A, B, C through Z, and then types of school, and then as you scroll down, you can see, and then you can see specific schools in alphabetical order. Now, you can also take your cursor and go over to a cluster. Let's pick Morris, for example. You can just light that up. And in there, what will come up are all the schools in that particular area. And Lee, if you could go ahead and, and highlight Morris High School. Now, Lee, if you could go ahead and highlight Morris High School. What you'll see is a picture of the high school, a description of what we're going to do in I-21, and as you scroll down, and you can either do it in English or Spanish, and if you scroll down, you can see everything in our system that we're planning to do. Every single project that we've got entered into our database can be illuminated and looked at. You can look at it by opening right where it says Track and Field, or you can actually hook and light that up. And that tells you when it's going to start, how much money we're going to spend and so forth, so you can open that particular project. This happens to be one that we finished, and you can see there's a photograph on the right, what it looked like before and what it looked like after. And you can go down a little bit, and Lee. And down at the bottom, we also have some more data and a project dashboard for the community to look at for change order rates or a variety of things that we may want to put in there. So let's go up and pick another school, Lee. Now, I can also go back and do it by type of school. Let's go up and pick high schools. Let's go out to Point Loma. Again, we've got project schedules at the bottom. There's a new classroom building. It's construction, various photographs of that, and then project schedule and so forth and so on. And the beauty of this is it's not, doesn't require anybody to sit and enter the data on a daily basis. It never gets old, never gets stale. As long as our project managers are involved in managing the project, it gets into the databases and pulls it right out. We're very happy with this, the way it came out, and I think we can use this for a lot of different things.
When is this, is this, it's not up yet? I mean, I'm on the website.
It's linked through PropS.
It's linked, you go to PropS.
The main website, and you can click on PropS, and then on the role of fighting the war.
Okay, because there's a, PropS project map goes back to the old stuff.
We haven't taken down the old one yet. But I wanted to actually show it to you before we went formal and approved it, but I'm very pleased with the way it is now. Now, we do have to do some work with the I-21 area. Let's pick an I-21 year one project, Lee. I think you go to Henry. And this picture, show people what is I-21 and so forth. The way that we enter the project data for I-21 is a little bit different than we do for hard construction, so we have to do some more programming work. But it will just give people an idea of what this is all about, at least those photographs of the I-21 system and so forth. We still have to do a little bit more work with this. This is a SharePoint tool. The district already owns it, and we're going to be using a lot more of the SharePoint capacity. It really helps us get into these SQL databases and do a little bit better job. I'm very happy with this.
I'm looking at Henry, since you called it out, and it says that it has an elementary school playground renovation and I-21 suite installation, and that's it.
Why don't you call up Henry High School, please?
Patrick Henry Elementary School Playground.
Right. That's the environmental mitigation that we're doing right there. And right now, Henry's further out, so we don't have anything in the system right now that we're working on, that has, other than the I-21 right now. You look at the whole site modernization at Henry. If you go back to Henry. And to the very bottom, you can see that the whole site modernization at Henry is out in 2013.
Okay.
So we're still in planning, but it shows you that's when we're going to do the work.
You might want to spell that word, that, you know, I mean, that, nobody knows what WSM means.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, and we'll do that.
Okay.
Well, that concludes my presentation. You know, it was a brief, do you like this? Is this, I think this is a great opportunity.
Actually, my concern, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
A couple of comments and questions.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a very good report. On page five for the data center, will we get a copy of the value engineering design?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then, is built, is there maintenance per year to maintain it?
Cost per year? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, maintenance. And then, on page nine, I really want to say congratulations at 19% disabled veterans. You know, I've been crying about that 3% for a long time, and to see it up to 19, I'm very, very happy. I look forward to the other categories accelerating as well. Do not be even happy here.
We're frankly struggling in that area. And I asked a meeting to set up with you and the superintendent about sharing your ideas on that. Karen's going to come forward with a plan that we're going to have that brings in some more community members on how to do it. But frankly, a lot of our challenge is with hard bid contracting at the end of the day. You know, I can hook up, I can take people that want to work, I can introduce them to our contractors that win contracts, and I can say, hey, you know, this would be a great partnership. We're doing that kind of stuff. But at the end of the day, in the hard bid contract, it's extraordinarily difficult. And the city's struggling with the same things as all the municipalities and public sector agencies are.
Okay, yes, and thank you for all the numbers, you know, filling in that form that I asked for. What I'm concerned about with the new website is what's been lost. And, you know, we went through an awful lot of trouble for each of the schools, where there were three levels under the old website, where we saw what the first cut was, what the principal felt was needed at the school, then a discussion of the master plan that we paid millions of dollars for from the, what's the name of the architectural firm that we hired to do the master plan for the district?
HMC.
HMC's master plan was captured for every single school. And then, the cluster meetings that we had, where each one of the schools in the clusters, you know, and they went to a great deal of trouble, over 1,000 people came out, we had a meeting at every single school about what it was that they wanted, and all that's lost now.
Well, if you'd like, Catherine, it'd be very easy for me to load that.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, and it'd be helpful. I'd be happy to sit down and talk with you about how to, you know, break that out, because it's so easy to lose the intent of the school and what is it they think they need. Now, if a school says that, you know, they want a swimming pool, obviously, that's not going to be there. But I do think that it's important for us to show the community that what they've showed, said that they wanted has, you know, been heard and listened to, you know, within the four corners of the bond.
Yeah, we can import that data.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to have a meeting with you and sit down and talk about it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because otherwise, it's not, you know, it's just people making it up as they go along. Okay.
Well, I apologize for the, my phone, but.
I did it earlier.
One question that I had was, in a situation like the multimedia arts project at San Diego High, when you're anticipating that we could come in 16% with change orders, what do you do in a situation like that where you're anticipating?
Well, we certainly negotiate each and every one of these things. And the change orders have to be authorized by the builder and the owner, that's us. And the builder typically comes in with an estimate. It's going to cost me this. In this particular case, there was a whole category of what we call clean power. You have to have a certain type of power, has to have certain characteristics. We didn't have that. And it was something that I think our consultant should have caught in the middle, and we're having those discussions. I prefer not to discuss that now, because it'll be ongoing.
Yeah.
We had to do some, run some conduit across campus and those sorts of things. And these things come in one by one, by one, by one. We approve them, we take a look at it, and we put them aside. And then, they'll come in and we'll negotiate these change orders.
Yeah.
And then, once they're negotiated, we have to bring them forward to the board for approval.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a process. It's not something we rubber stamp. We take them very serious. That's a performance metric that really shows you the quality of the drawings and your consultant's work.
Okay, great, thanks, Stuart. Yeah, go ahead.
On the downtown library project, you have.
Yes, sir.
The, you know, the $10 million or greater than $10 million for starting July 2010. We also talked about the funds for the lease in terms of using redevelopment funds and what's happened with that and how, what's that kind of freed up in terms of proposition F funds?
Well, it's a $30 million total project. That's a great question. Eventually, all of it will be paid for by CCDC funds. Eventually, all of it will be carried by that. And then, we're going to borrow money basically from PropS, and as the CCDC funds, we're going to reimburse the bond fund. And we'll be using PropS money in the development area.
So in terms of, in this upfront time period, how soon are redevelopment funds going to start coming in?
Well, we've got enough right now to pay $17 million.
Seven million on the lease.
And $10 million. So we have $17 million available for us right now.
You're paying $17 million on the lease, and the lease isn't all due all at once anyway, correct?
It's a prepaid lease. We pay for it over a period of five years.
Well, that's what I mean, so it's the $7 million now, and then some more can be paid later.
Right, over a period of time. Now, we're sending a very detailed memo to the board on this, and I hesitate to do this off the top of my head, because I'll get quoted and it'll be a little. It's $17 million total right now. $7 million is going to go to the prepaid lease, and then, as we go forward on a year-by-year basis, that'll be coming out of PropS funds, and as the CCDC money comes in, it's reimbursed into that area, into the PropS account. Now, that money will be dedicated to improvements in the, for schools in the CCDC area, specifically and mostly at San Diego High School.
So the $10 million for construction is all going to be covered at the time of the construction?
Well, it'll be the proceed money. You know, that includes the architecture work and so forth.
Right.
So we don't give them $10 million and say, go off and do work, and, you know, we pay as we go.
Right. But it's going to be covered by the redevelopment money coming in rather than delayed.
Absolutely, yes, sir. That was the board direction right from the very beginning, was the $10 million with that. And I think the board came back and said, well, why don't you look at CCDC money as in total? And we're able to do that and work with our finance department and the CCDC folks to make that cash available.
That's good, that's made a big difference.
It makes a big difference for us. It's a great idea, and it's actually going to be spent where it's supposed to be spent, which is downtown.
Yeah.
It's a development area. The school's a development area.
Stuart, back?
Yeah. Well, on that, on that, I'll call, difficult topic. The tax agreement from CCDC could be used for any school project within the redevelopment area, including San Diego High, including the idea of the AV program or the new, that new program, too. In other words.
Typical capital projects.
I don't want to, I'm not going to get into debate over, you know, whether or not we should be putting whatever money into the library or not. The question really is that the money is not just dedicated to the library project unless we do it.
The board has its discretion where they want to spend the money.
And they made that decision as a body, which I'll respect. But the facts are that CCDC did not designate the money for the school brewery. It's us that are doing, we're actually doing that ourselves.
Oh, yes, sir. It's your.
It's a way to pay back PropS for the front money, right?
We're using CCDC, we're using CCDC funds to reimburse the bond.
Yeah, well, we've used those same funds, for example, for enhancing Washington School and other things within redevelopment areas.
Oh, absolutely. You have some great projects.
We could do the same thing with Sherman. We could do with any number of schools within the redevelopment area. It's not just that it's only for the school brewery, it's what we've decided to do with it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Richard, just a couple of closing remarks. I appreciate, too, the good work of the staff in highlighting where we are. Couple of observations. One, the E-rate funding we've got is the highest and continues to climb. I think that's because we're being very aggressive, Darrell and Stu and CFO, trying to get that. That's that revenue piece to help us offset other costs. Secondly, real pleased about some of the things they've done, and I want to call it out. Hoover High had 50-year-old termite-ridden portables at the front end of Alcoha that have been replaced. So that's a very positive, and I want to bring that out so that the public understands what we're doing here for our kids. You're seeing a lot of CCTE and overcrowded relief grant funding, so that's classrooms, that's our career tech work. You all remember, and I'm just here to point it out again, is that much of this is expiring matching money that had to be front-loaded, along with our balancing with I-21 requirements. Last two items. I'd like to take a real strategic look at the marketplace, because I think we could, we have a good news story with our minority veteran women-owned, and we're working hard. You could see everybody around us, City comes to mind, you see it in the grand jury reports. I think we need to look at how big is the marketplace in each of these items. Maybe we can only get to a certain level, because that's all of the women-owned or minority-owned businesses in a given industrial sector. And I've talked to Stu a little about that, so we need to get a little more strategic. Yeah, you know, how big is the universe of possibilities? But we need to do our work in that area, and he and his team will do that, so that we, when we come back to you, say, the best guess is we can get 22% in that industry, because that's all there is in that industry, but let's see how well we can get there. But overall, I think we're going in the right direction here, and there's got to be more next week with Mark Young here to talk about the $200 million number, what that means, the 40-year debt service and all of that. But I think they're on track.
Thank you, Stuart.
Yes, sir.
Very well done, yep. Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
Upstairs from five.
Nope.